Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Select Board meeting for Monday, June seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four. This meeting is being held in hybrid app fashion as well. Present tonight is myself, Chairman Jason Perron, Vice Chairman, I almost said that one, Diane Gale, clerk Doug Moglen. I'd like to introduce everybody online and here to our new Chief Administrative Officer, Nicole Parker. She's here for her first meeting. Acting Chief, our C A O, Landis does not here this evening. Assistant C A O, Nadine Signoni, and our Secretary Lisa is in the other room. Glad to pledge allegiance, buddy. You would like to lead us in that?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the great bold leader for which this stands, on my creation, under God, in this world, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda tonight is going to be public comments. Is there anyone that would be interested in making any public comments?
Hi, Rebecca Parent, Houseside Road. These comments are my own. They're not anybody else's. I wanted to, I could sit behind a computer and, you know, garbage talk, but I prefer to do it, you know, face to face. So what I want to talk about is the recent lieutenant process that basically just taught everybody in this town and in the police department that you should do less, that doing more in fact will not help you to proceed in your career or your life. For fifteen years, I've remained relatively quiet as to my true thoughts on a lot of things that have gone on in this town because I didn't want to negatively impact my husband's career. And as it turns out, I guess I needn't have worried. I think what we now know is if you do more by way of education and making yourself an expert in a topic, if you take leadership courses to make sure that you have a staff that respects you and that you can lead them and guide them and motivate them, that's not enough. That what you, if you take on additional duties that the chief normally does or lieutenant normally does, also not enough. And you definitely should not be committed to the community. When we reward somebody who says that they're happy at the end of the day when they get to go home and leave this town, I think it's, it's a problem. It doesn't matter whether you essentially say that you've developed a formula. In the data analytics world, we call that garbage in, garbage out. Ultimately, if you don't have the right inputs and if you don't have the right formula, you're not going to get the right outcome. And I think that disservice was done to this community ultimately. I think, you know, especially when it's been done, you know, a couple of times when we ignore some of the really critical learnings and criteria for somebody to lead a community, I think that's a real problem. And I also think that when you have an opinion on something and you don't have the backbone to back it up, you don't really end up with a good outcome. And so ultimately, I think, you know, Diane, you won with thirty-five by thirty-five votes when you ran. And I'm ashamed to say that I was one of them frankly, but I will not make that mistake again. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to?
Yeah, Joe D D two five eight feeding over. Oh, sorry, you're next. I'm so sorry. I didn't see your hand.
No, my name is Kathleen Argwini, and it was my son Roger that was overlooked on this lieutenant position. Southwick has been always dear to our hearts and we love Southwick. My son, born and raised here, he settled here. He has his own home here, his children go to school here. And personally, looking at candidate one, candidate two, without a name on it, I would say it would be hard pressed for anybody to say, oh, this is the more choice candidate, this one. It's inconceivable to me that this small town can take a decent, hardworking young man who is their own Southwick product and and dismiss him like that. And I would love to take the lists that I have prepared and say, who would vote for this one? Who would vote for that one? It would be unanimous on this side. Roger loves Southwick. He's at all the events, all the community things. Other person, nah. Other person, well, I don't care because I don't live here. He's forty-five minutes away. He's not invested in this town in any way. And I'm very disappointed in Southwick. I taught here for thirty-five years. And it's heartbreaking. But you showed him fun. Not a good choice.
Thank you. Anyone else, Mr. Lee?
Hi, Joe D D two five eight feeding those roads south of Mass. How are you tonight? So let's talk about the lieutenant's positions. Everyone else is slamming you guys. You have four candidates. It's a tough choice and you make it. You can't hire four. Yes, two lived in town, two didn't live in town. I think they're all Southwick guys, and I think they all did a great job for us and they still do. They don't seem to be too upset about who won, except maybe the one that didn't. And thank God you got onto the table at least. What happens if we didn't even make the table? And so you guys are doing a good job. Keep it up. Good luck.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience? Anyone on Zoom? Looks like we have no takers. So we'll move on to the second item on the agenda. Six oh five, pretty close. Review and discuss the L P P agreement with Southfield. Ms. Poehler, I see her here, Chair Concom. I see Mr. Pratt online and I see Norm right across the desk from me, so. Whatever you guys want to talk about. I think we took pretty much talked about it, so. As I said, I put that out and everybody showed up. I did get everybody's input. I wanted to make sure there's no additional input that everybody wants to put in regarding this. I got your email, Sabrina. That's what the attorneys are going to make sure everything's legal lake and stuff like that. Norm, I did get yours. Now that I've got, I'm assuming everyone's input, I will be sending this back to Colin.
I'm not done yet.
Oh, I know. Well.
You didn't get everybody or you didn't document everybody's.
So. Everybody that's here that responded to me, I've got your input. I don't know if there's anybody else that's here that has any more for any further input on the L P P. I don't know if Mr. Mr. Cheever?
I would like to. I made the comment that we had this afternoon, associate members, and I added in return, Southwick will appoint one associate member with the Southfield Conservation Commission. For purposes of this document, associate member means the individual is a non-voting member, but fully participates in discussion and debate. And I'd just like to clarify why I think that is so important. You may not be aware, but I've been appointed the liaison from the Conservation Commission, Southwick and L M C Southwick through the Conservation Commission, Southfield. I've attended several meetings. And we've long time felt that we had a double standard on conservation on this side of the lake versus that side of the lake. And this past meeting is a perfect example of why we need representation there. There was an item on the involved the lake. And I had prepared a presentation. I was not allowed to speak because I was not the petitioner and it was not Paul and Karen. Okay. I was a player in the, in the meeting. They had public comments. I asked to speak and the first person jumped up and said, he wants to speak on Mayflower Lane. I said, I am on the agenda. That's not the purpose of this. They weren't going to let me speak. Fortunately, the chair did. Okay, and I should, I should, I, but I had to be brief. And I gave my quick comments on the black of the silver fence and all the pre-cutting they've done on the shoreline. And I'm happy to say yesterday I went by and the silver fence is up. But we do have a double standard and we need representation over there. So if we're going to give it to them, they need to give it to us.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm not so mad.
Oh, I'm just making sure. Sabrina, did you have anything before we move on?
I, well, I have a question in regards to the officio for the South of Concom from, I'm assuming the Southfield Concom. What would the purpose, is the purpose just L P P or everything that comes along with the Conservation Commission, including what?
This is my concern.
That's, that's what we were gonna.
Yeah.
Not, I didn't know that was what Diane was going to talk about. That is something that was going to be talked about.
Know what the goal.
They didn't also did list that my concerns as well. The whole thing about them being on, it's a position on conservation is I don't see that anywhere in the wheelhouse of what they should be allowed to do. It should only be involved with L P P and it should only be discussion of L P P issues so if they can discuss it, you know, with their town. But it shouldn't be in any way regarding the laws or the bylaws with the L P P. But just discussion in it, and it shouldn't have anything to do with anything else that we discussed for Conservation Commission in Southwick.
That was actually one of my concerns as far as if they had someone on. If we ended up going that route, they wouldn't be able to vote for anything but lake-related issues, but I, I like Norm, I had actually asked when we were there, I think you were there, if a, if a, if a non-voting member would suffice and this is what we're here for is to get all the information so I can give it back to them and so we can actually come to an agreement for everybody. So thank you guys for the input. Diane?
My initial thought was they needed, they have an L P P representative. They have a couple of L P P representatives. Some and they are advisory to, to the select board. They should recognize on their side those members of that L P P to whether it's their Conservation Commission or their select board and use them in that advisory capacity. And that way they are aware of the issues going on and have a voice. They have a voice coming back here. And it's, it's in the same capacity then. And we don't weigh in on Southfield matters except related to the lake permitting, lake management. And they won't weigh in on ours. That's my first. No. Second, if they must be a participant in Conservation Commission, in my mind, it would be an advisory role, an advisory member. And would only be advising on matters directly related to the lakes as they pertain to Southfield residents. It has to be that finite. They're not going to make a recommendation or advise on anything on Klein Road.
Absolutely. That was, that was one of my concerns.
And I don't, I don't think we need to be on their Conservation Commission either if they recognize that L P P as an advisory and utilize it. That's my first preference.
Again, like I think I said to you, Sabrina, I, I brought this back because this is what was presented. I'm willing to talk about anything. That's what the whole purpose of this is. So, you know, and everybody's here to give their opinion and input. So this is, this wasn't, just so everybody knows, this wasn't an agreement. It's already done. You know, this is what we're here for, to find out exactly what will work for everybody here, come to some sort of consensus and bring that back to them and then try and work this out. So.
Jason, just one more point?
Yeah, absolutely, Mr. Pratt.
Um, so as Diana specified about the L P P agreement, I think it's kind of goes a little bit deeper when it comes to the Southfield side of the lake as far as norms, representation for conservation issues. As far as work that goes on along the lakeside, he has been very diligent in being aware of what goes on over there, and I'd like to see that to be able to continue. Whereas, you know, Southfield doesn't really have any skin in the game on the Southwick side because it is a Massachusetts Great Pond. I think that we do, or we should have some authority in looking to see what projects they have going on over there and maybe making sure that there's staying to the regulations of what we have for erosion control and things like that. The other concern I have with somebody from Southfield being on Southwick Conservation even as an advisory would be, I'm not sure if the state would allow that. That's something just to check into. They might specify who can be on a conservation board or even as an advisory through the state regs. So that just might be something else to check on.
I did do a little digging on that. There's nothing definitive on that that I could find. Obviously, that would be what Mr. Coyle would be digging into as well. But I'm hearing everybody on this. And we'll get, that's what we'll kick it back and get some answers and try and come up with a plan and an agreement that works for everybody. Very good.
I do like the insertion that Chris put in his whereas that their Massachusetts Great Ponds and Town of Southwick has been granted the ability. I would just replace that with the duty by the state. If it were me. So consider either or.
I'd probably go with authority or liability.
Or authority.
Anyone else have any input on the L P P process and agreement that we're going to try and hammer out with Southfield?
I do have something from Jeanne Nelson, the secretary. She had mentioned that it, this agreement should also include that the parties agree that the Southfield residents are not exempt from completing and submitting the L P P application on a yearly basis and have the stickers adhere to the applicable structures slash vessels inclusive of docks, lifts, moorings, swim floats, buoys and vessels and that vaguely that fines can be imposed in the event Southfield lakefront owners do not submit their application in the allocated timeframe, like fifteenth of each year and have all structures and vessels removed by ice out if it's ever first. I'm like.
It's required.
I can't usually read my. I know Mr. Moglen can't read my writing and I know I sometimes can't even read my own. So, perfect. Thank you. Anyone else? Anybody else on Zoom?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
So I agree on the, what Jeannie sent in because it's also very important. This payment is in lieu of us collecting those fees from the residents, but it does not absorb Connecticut residents from their their duties under, if they care to join the L P P. Any Southfield resident or Southwick residents, feel free to go for a chapter ninety-one license if they'd like to stay out of the L P P and not fill out the online form. But that's always been a sticking point with Southfield over the years when we try to encourage compliance via letter or whatever, we usually get a sternly worded email or stern phone call from the Southfield attorney. So if codifying that in the letter would be a good idea. I also agree with Mr. Pratt. You know, ex officio by definition is almost needs would have to be a Southfield Conservation Commission member. But it doesn't make them ex officio to the Southwood Conservation Commission effectively makes them a member. It doesn't say a non-voting member or anything like that. It's just by the nature of their office. So that would mean if we had one on theirs and by ex officio would have to be a Conservation Commission member. And I learned that when we had the master plan that the Chair of the Planning Board was ex officio to the Master Plan Advisory Committee. So and it could only be the Chair of the, the Planning Board at that point to the master plan. So I think it's a, it's a tricky situation because I, I also think under Mass General Law, it does define a Conservation Commission. In fact, this board recommended to send a special act to the legislature on the comp, the exact composition of our own Conservation Commission. And I don't know that we can actually do what's being asked to be done here. Nothing wrong with having someone be an advisor or something like that in some unofficial capacity to the board. And it should be converse. As far as L P P goes, or sorry, L M C, I don't know, because that's a advisory committee to the select board with no, zero statutory authority. They act, they, they do important yeoman work. But all of their enforcement power and, and is delegate is comes from the, the border committee that is, has statutory responsibility for that, whether it's this board or Concom or Agcom, or it doesn't matter whom, you know, whichever board that is that has some statutory authority. So I think that would need to be worked out. I think the idea that's present here is a good one though, because you know, we've, I know just in the last week I saw work that was done in Southfield that was actually absolutely mind-blowing just to see it. No way that that would happen in the town of Southwick. Conservation wouldn't permit it. It actually probably get laughed right out of a meeting, but it, it happens in Southfield apparently by the town's own folks did the work. So I think that there's benefit to be derived here from having mutual representation, whether it's in an advisory capacity or what have you, but I don't see how we could seat a Southfield Conservation Commission member, even ex officio or not on or a Southwick, a Southfield resident on the Conservation Commission. I don't see how that could happen. And probably the converse is also true. So I think it just needs to be in some kind of advisory capacity. Thank you.
Just one more thing. It's really two different things. We're trying to correct a conservation issue with a lake permitting, dock permitting program.
Correct.
They don't belong together.
Correct.
So, there you go.
Got it.
We just did it just now, just talking about it, right? And we were talking about work that was done and nothing to do with docks and
Yeah.
and boats.
And this isn't.
But it was work that was done in Connecticut, right? Yeah, I think this was. I mean, this is a great agreement. I'm glad to see a successor agreement. You know, appreciate everybody that's put the time in to, to, to execute this. I just think that this section is number two is really problematic. And then Jeannie's suggestion is, is a really good one because that always gets everybody up and it's usually in year two or three of the agreement when compliance starts to wane and the letters go out and then everybody gets all riled up. And if we can avoid that, it'd be great.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you all. All right. Next item on the agenda is acknowledge the payroll warrant number twenty-four, twenty-five dated six, five, two thousand and twenty-four and the amount of four hundred twenty-five thousand, one hundred forty dollars and forty-seven cents. Next is to acknowledge payables warrant two, four, two, nine, B dated six, ten, two thousand and twenty-four and the amount of three hundred thirteen thousand, seven hundred twenty-one dollars and fifty-six cents. And didn't see any. So I'm going to stop right now. Our next discussion item. We're going to go on to talking about designating Ms. Gale to review the marijuana retailer application packets against submission criteria to move forward with the Select Board review. So we're going to have to talk about that later because we also talked about in the.
Yeah, well, this is just to designate me to make sure they met the criteria.
And I will be looking for a motion and I got one. I'll second that motion. Roll call vote. Jason Perron, yes?
Thank you.
Doug Moglen. Next, we're going to talk about approving the change order for the One Klein Road pulver project with Eastern Earthworks. Randy, anything we need to know about it?
Yeah, this is one of the, I think, good kind of change orders where we, we had a grant, the M V P program. Biggs came in very competitive and under budget and we had some excess money to utilize and are willing to use that to extend or replace some existing drainage in the vicinity before and coordinate this with M V P program. They're on board with it. So this is a change order to ask its folk to work to the contractor.
I would be looking for a motion to approve that change order for the One Klein Road Culvert Project.
Motion to approve the Klein Road change order.
Second. Roll call vote. Jason Perron, yes?
Thank you.
Doug Moglen, I.
Next, we need to approve the donations to the Southwick Animal Control Shelter for eight hundred and sixty-one dollars from the following people. We have R. R Chakovsky, one hundred dollars. M N T Cooper five, fifty dollars. S Emery twenty-five dollars. S Felce Signo, Signo and Friends one hundred and forty dollars. P and H Via, Via Coni one hundred dollars. M Fostini, one hundred dollars. Industrial sandblasting, fifty dollars. Interstate building, one hundred and eleven dollars. J and N LaFave, thirty-five dollars. M and G Pistakis, fifty dollars. J Russell, twenty-five dollars. C and J Sawyer, twenty-five dollars. And K and B Shakt, fifty dollars. I'd be looking for a motion to approve those donations.
Motion to accept those donations to the Animal Control Center Shelter.
Doug Moglen, I.
Roll call vote. Jason Perron, I.
Doug Moglen, I.
Next, we need to authorize the Chair to sign the agreement between the Sound of Southwick and Pioneer Valley Planning Commission Professional Services for the Town of Southwick Green Communities Designation Grant Administration effective May seventh, two thousand and twenty-four through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five.
I'll make that motion for you to sign.
Second.
Roll call vote. Jason Perron, I.
Thank you.
Doug Moglen.
Next, we need to accept and sign the SAFE grant for student awareness for four thousand six hundred forty-eight dollars and senior SAFE grant for two thousand one hundred ninety-one dollars. Chief, any?
Um, just again, this is a support grant offered by the Department of Fire Services and it's based on population and your active participation in the safe program. We've applied for and received this grant several years in a row. This year's award was on the higher side. We're very excited to get the amount that they awarded. And it'll continue to support two very critical programs, which is student education as well as senior safe programs in our community. So we're fortunate to have the Department of Fire Services to continue to support this and it is supported again in the backbone of the legislature in Massachusetts. So excited to see him today. Thanks for supporting SAFE.
Very good. Thank you, Chief. I would be looking for a motion to accept the, the SAFE grants.
Motion to accept and sign the grant for the SAFE grants.
I would ask that Select Board Member Moglen sign it if he doesn't pay for it.
I was just going to say that.
Legacy.
Just the change in ownership.
All right. So I'll make a motion for Doug to sign that.
I'll, I'll second that motion. Roll call vote. Jason Perron, I.
Thank you.
Doug Moglen, I.
Next, we need to acknowledge Call Forest Firefighter Ben Cleveland for completion of the firefighter one-two training.
Evening, everybody. As, as tradition would have it, each time we have a call force firefighter who participates in, in training, they do it on their own accord. They have two opportunities. One is to go to Connecticut and do firefighter one, followed up by a second course of firefighter two, usually a year later. Or they can choose to go to the Fire Academy in Springfield, which is the firefighter one and two combined program. Ben chose to do the latter, which is a little bit more time investment and certainly a little bit more demanding on his schedule. He's been with the department for just over a year, was working initially as an E M T. Cut the firebug as well, too, so jumped on the fire side. And I'm here to say that he successfully completed all the requirements for firefighter two, one and two and is now given the yellow helmet, which indicates that that success as well as being now an interior firefighter and no restrictions. So congratulations, Ben. Yeah, maybe you can stand with the left. Yeah. Come over here. There you go. Well done. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
One picture, that's what you're going to get. Thank you very much. Thank you. I'm honored. My right. That's that.
Congratulations.
Thank you, everybody. Have a good one.
Thanks, Chief. Next, we need to acknowledge retirement resignation of Dick Grenells for the day of six twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-four as his last day. Next, we need to. Next, we need to approve the contract for Dick Grinnell's as a consultant for a maximum of ten weeks. Through eight thirty one, twenty twenty four to cover construction activities. With a Klein Road Culvert replacement project and any other projects under construction this summer. Randy, anything else you need to add?
Nope.
I would be looking for a motion to approve that contract.
Motion made.
Second.
Roll call vote. Jason Peron, I.
Thank you.
Doug Moblan, I.
Next, we need to approve and accept the donation. Of four hundred dollars from the Sarah Gillette Services for the Elderie Incorporated. To create an entertainment cart for the adult section of the library. Into the gift account.
I'll make a motion to accept that donation.
Second.
Roll call vote. Jason Peron, I.
Thank you.
Doug Moblan, I.
Need to sign the WPA Form Two. Determination of applicability Massachusetts Wetlands Protection Act. Mass General law, chapter one thirty one, section forty for Wally Park. Something you need to actually make a motion on? Or just sign it?
We were the applicant. I think we're just signing.
Maybe is that the one I just signed on?
I don't think so. We didn't.
Yes, it is.
It is. Sorry, Lisa.
No, I, yeah, she had me sign it elsewhere. A little sign, little sign tabby was somewhere else.
Okay.
Motion for the chair to sign.
Second.
Roll call vote. Jason Peron, I.
Thank you.
Doug Moblan, I.
Let's see. We've done that. New business. Fiscally year twenty five paving and infrastructure projects. Randy?
Well, this is a fun meeting every year. We talk about where to spend some money to. So I gave you a summary of all funding we have available. Obviously, it was coming appropriation. Uh, I don't know what they go. We've also have our chapter ninety pair, or our chapter ninety allocation is available as of July first. And then there's, uh. A couple of, I call them bonus. Allocations this year. The, uh, fair share amendment, um. I think it's called the millionaire's tax and similar to that, some of the terms. And also rural, rural, rural way funding. Uh, a few meetings ago, the board are out voted to allocate some hard put funds towards data infrastructure projects. And then when we have these meetings, every year there's duty some money carried over from prior year. So this year we have, uh, just about two point four five million dollars available. And I gave you a list of, uh. Forty eight projects. And, uh. Happy to discuss any of these with you based on the merits. I know in the past we've also. Gone and done site visits. So inspect certain these roads in person. Happy to do that again this year. And we also have other projects in mind and obviously be happy to pull some numbers together to be to have some of the projects quite a lot. One thing to keep in mind. For some of these projects that, uh, include both paving and drainage. We could break them up into two years, um, like we did, um, beating, um, Fred Jackson Road. Couple of years ago, we did drainage in one year, having a second year. Uh, we're kind of doing that now with feeding those road, doing drainage work, uh, going. Uh, with this year and hoping we can pave this, that that section of road. Next year with these funds. So keep that in mind, too. Some of these numbers, the numbers I gave you include both drainage and. Paving.
Are there any projects that? We did the drainage that are on this list for the paving that we probably should. Reaffirm our commitment to those.
Feeding Hills Road, I gave you three, three options for feeding road road, just. How far do you want to go? Four A, four B, four C. And then, uh, South Woma Street, number seventeen. We did drainage work on that road. So those would be my two top priorities is to complete those projects.
Can I make a suggestion, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
That we once again schedule our annual kind of morning tour of the roads to. Have a look at some of these and invite. Ms. Parker to come along as well to get a look at it since. This will be our first look at some of the roads that we've got. And, uh. We could schedule that sooner than later and just do it in, you know, in one morning like we did last year.
Are we doing it on the weekend last year?
No, I think it's Friday.
I'm pretty much open for foreseeable future, so. Randy, would you be looking for feeding Hills Road? I know you're finishing up the drainage. Would you looking to be do? Like. I'm assuming based on where the work, where is number two sixty eight? How far does that go? Is that where they're set off now? Okay. So you're probably looking to want to do that section? Or just the section that they're digging up that they've been doing?
Yeah, I, 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 if I would choose B.
B.
I think we. Talked about that one before going up to that point.
That is the worst section.
Hmm. I hope I'm right. It's come up in the full. There last year.
Well, you want to pick a date and, um. We can review our notes from last year and. Marry those up. Can you just refresh me, Randy, on Gargan? We were only going to do sidewalks one side, correct?
Yeah, we did that last year.
And this is, and now this is gonna.
You took up one side.
We ripped out sidewalks on one section of Gargantir, so that was approved last year.
Just one section of it.
On, yeah, the south side.
Okay.
We didn't allocate money to put a proper sidewalk on the side that.
That would be number twenty four.
Gotcha.
I know you and I, I came up, uh, I know there's been some inquiries as far as, uh. Sidewalks on Vining Hill somewhere down the road. And I can say, and I'm sure Mr. Moblan. And concur, there's an awful lot more kids in our neighborhoods, um. I don't walk that way, so it's not such a reason, but, um. Uh, you know, up to Pearl Brook at least, it'd be something I would probably be looking to at least put on the radar. Um.
Twenty seven, twenty.
Is it?
Yeah.
It's half a million bucks.
No, there it is. All right. But I have seen a few, it, I, you know, I pay attention to Facebook and the the forums and. I I've seen kids coming around the corners and there's an older gentleman that walks, I think, every morning. He's, he's out there, it, you know, it's something I think that needs to. Be done. I'm glad to see it's on the radar and I don't know where we throw that in, but.
I have a question on that. I think it's a good idea. Do we still have a sidewalk offset fund? From development that's occurred elsewhere in town where developers put money in that account?
Yeah, there's about thirty to thirty five thousand.
We're almost there then.
I will say that when the development on more binding roads moves forward. Uh, there will be. Fairly sizable contribution to sidewalk fund. I want to say a hundred and sixty thousand, not way ahead, but I could, I could be out, I don't want to.
How far is a hundred, you know, sidewalk, I know roads, I know we know that, but how, a hundred and sixty, how far would that get with sidewalks?
Uh. It's about a hundred bucks.
Hundred bucks foot.
So.
We'll look at College Highway to Pearl Brooks, four fifty.
Hmm.
The more you do, you know, the better. You gotta get, get the most sidewalk you do it like that. I I will say that the cost of concrete or cement has gone up. Tremendously in the past. Four months. So Mass DOT does have a, they, they track costs and they has, um. It's kind of like three times, you know. It's lost.
Nice. All right, what, what dates?
When do you guys want to do it? I, the only, the only days I can't really do are Thursdays.
Pick one.
Pick one?
Fridays are good.
Fine for me.
That'll work. What Friday we want? Twenty eight? Five?
Twenty eight is no good because it's the national. How about the twenty first? How about this Friday?
Friday, I don't think so. Not very good with playing things in my phone.
Oh.
I don't. Think I have anything.
Well, this will be the only Friday. Well, we have a luncheon at noon. And. This is the only Friday I probably have something to conflict with that.
Oh, no problem. Well.
Want to do five and the fifth? Is that one? No, actually, that's. That's a technical, no.
That'd be all right.
Friday is the fifth is fine.
But you're all.
July fifth?
Yeah.
Yeah. Is that good?
No, that's, I'm off that week.
Oh.
I'm away.
Okay.
You're off the whole week, okay.
Twelve.
I can do the twenty eighth. I'll just work it in.
Did you say you could or couldn't do the twenty eighth, Mr. Moblan?
We can do the twenty eighth.
Uh.
Or, I'm sorry, this Friday, you said. You said this Friday.
I could do this Friday or I could do the twenty eighth at ten.
Let's just do, if it works for everybody, we'll do. Nicole, is it?
Oh, yeah.
All right. Um, we'll do the twenty first. This for coming Friday.
Meeting at what time?
Eight or nine?
Eight.
Eight, all right. Eight at the DPW. That works for everybody?
Okay.
You could have your six sixty one.
I think that's going to be covered for that. Next, we need to approve the bid awards for the following DPW annual services. Crack ceiling, guardrails, line striping. Pavement materials, emergency tree maintenance and vehicle and equipment repair. Randy, you want to go over any of these?
I can, um, I'll just kind of do a real quick summary. We can have, get some questions you have. So we have seven, seven bids. That were open last week for all of our kind of annual, like, on all that contracts. For the categories you listed, I would say the. The, uh, cast of bid vendors is same as past. Um. No real surprises. I I did, uh, include, uh, there was a increase or decrease over. Prior year pricing. Uh, I see, I think you see the most general went up a little bit. One made made a little more than others. Um. But I don't have any, any, any questions. If you want to shake here, I think if any question, you gotta break it down as best as you could and go on the line.
So we do want to do these one by one?
Yeah.
They have a password.
One by one. Okay. Anybody any questions?
All right, so I would be looking for a motion to approve. The bids for. The borrowed materials. Bid to John S Lane and Rosati Materials.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Roll call vote. Jason Peron, I.
Thank you.
Doug Moblan, I.
I would be looking for a motion for the crack ceiling to be, um, awarded to Indus Industries.
Motion made.
Second.
Roll call vote. Jason Peron, I.
Thank you.
Doug Moblan, I.
Looking for a motion to approve the bid for premier fence to be doing the guardrails for fiscal year twenty five.
Make that motion?
Second.
Roll call vote. Jason Peron, I.
Thank you.
Doug Moblan, I.
I would be looking for a motion to accept the. Line striping. With Atlantic. Pavement marking.
Make that motion.
Second.
Roll call vote. Jason Peron, I.
Thank you.
Doug Moblan, I.
Next, I will be looking for a motion to accept the pavement materials bid.
This one do we sprout or find one?
Just read it all and.
So for the products, we have coal patch to Andrick materials. Double dents to Eurovia Northeast paving. And the berm mix to Andrick materials and. That true? True stone.
Make a motion to accept those as red for pavement materials.
Second.
Roll call vote. Jason Peron, I.
Thank you.
Doug Moblan, I.
Next, I'll be looking for emergency tree maintenance to bid to be ordered to Enviro Arbor Solutions.
Make that motion.
Second.
Roll call vote. Jason Peron, I.
Thank you.
Doug Moblan, I.
Okay, so we're gonna, yeah, we're gonna be doing the vehicle and equipment repairs, awarding bids. So let's see the, we're gonna be doing the. Looking for a motion to award the pickup truck category. To Sarat Ford. The dump truck tri axle category to Marka Ford. And the heavy equipment and machinery, machinery categories to Keynes Mechanical.
Make a motion to accept those as red for vehicle and equipment repairs.
Second.
Roll call vote. Jason Peron, I.
Thank you.
Doug Moblan.
Jerome, can I just ask a question from my own, um, knowledge to?
Yes, absolutely.
Were these IFBs or RFBs? When the bids that went out, invitation to bid or was it a request for proposal?
It was not RFP. It was more traditional bid, I guess, probably.
I think, and what I see some were lowest, were not, were they all not lowest?
Yeah, so like for borrowing materials, um, there was, that was a bid under thirty B.
Yeah.
So that's a right on board bid. So a little better was actually in the. I think they were in the. I think. But we pick up, so we could, we could, we could back our, our cost. To pick up the materials over there.
Yeah.
So, so the other fitters, uh, John Slaney and, uh. The body were much closer.
Okay.
Than, uh, than Hill.
And some you said were the lowest and some you say it was most advantageous, so that wasn't the lowest?
So in borrow materials, that was advantageous, correct?
Okay.
Also the, um. Even materials. With also. Those are all of those.
Okay. Yeah. Thanks.
We need to renew year three of heavy equipment rental contract for fiscal year twenty twenty five. Randy?
So this is our annual contract for heavy equipment rentals. It's within with Crestview Construction for. I believe a decade now at least, um. It was bid in twenty FY twenty three, set up as a one year contract with option drainage for two additional years. So we're just ending year two of that, called a three year contract, so we would be moving into year three. Uh, with this, with this award. And the way that Crestview was made the pricing, their basically pricing was consistent each year FY twenty three, twenty four, twenty five, there was no change in prices.
And I guess I'd be looking to for a motion to renew. For the year three of the heavy equipment rental contract. Fiscal twenty five.
Doug Moblan, I.
Roll call vote. Jason Peron, I.
Thank you.
Doug Moblan, I.
Need to approve and sign the anticipation serial loan grant application note payment. To East Hampton Savings Bank in the amount of one hundred twenty nine thousand. Two hundred seventy eight dollars and fifty two cents on August first. For the twenty twenty four DPW and SEMA grants.
Make a motion, need to sign that? Or we all sign that?
Everyone.
Everyone, we all sign that.
Second.
Roll call vote. Jason Peron, I.
Thank you.
Doug Moblan, I.
All right. Anybody have any new business? Diane?
Sure, just a heads up, um, we tweaked the sewer rates late last year sometime, early fall maybe. And, uh, talking to Randy, the retained earnings on that will be running. Low. So, uh, we need to have some conversation on that sooner than later. And, um, I've asked Andy, Randy to prepare some data so we have at least a starting point to. Talk about. What to do with that.
talk about what to do with that situation. And I know how you feel about that. It's a common topic.
Alright.
And, uh, just wanna mention the Southwick Land Trust is having their launch party at the Brass Rail on Sunday between twelve and two P M. To, uh, talk to people some more about what their plans are. That's it.
Mr. Mogul.
No new business.
Nadine, anything? Ms. Parker?
It's all new.
It's all new? And I have nothing right now. I believe actually, the one thing I brought up, I think Randy, I didn't even realize you added it to the list, so. So. That was the Vining Hill sidewalks, yeah, so. So then we are on to old business and dates to remember. We need to talk about the appointments process and status, and the town clerk will give update on June first for needed appointments. We are have this list here somewhere. Yeah. Typical me, I know, mixed it in with everything else.
You want a little stigma?
Sure, thank you. Faster than digging through the pile, so. So we've got a few, bunch of vacant and expired, and we need to move forward on these. Diane, I know you worked on that.
We have a couple of new applicants I've been keeping track of. Um, I see people are submitting their things online for reappointments. Um, and or jiggering their roles on the board as, as associate versus, and so as they come up, we can, I think we've got a pretty good handle on that. We still have some vacancies. We can still recruit.
So I guess we need to start looking at fillers.
Um, sure.
Um.
We can do the, um, you know, public work ones and all those. First. Public safety.
We put that on next week's and, uh, not next week, the next agenda will fill all that out, and then we can get going with the vacant seats.
Which will be July first.
LPP issue with Scudery Jury Property. And we did that last week. Um. You know, I went home after it and dug up the GIS on Southfield, the state of Massachusetts, Southwick. And I forget which other one, of course, Google's not official, but, um, ended up with pretty much four different property lines. That didn't match, and I know I sent a, we sent a message out to John Goddard and Mr. Grinnell's. And really, the only way this comes, I think, to a complete conclusion is the property needs to be surveyed. And property lines need to be figured out because there's different. I was shown one marker here and a different marker there. The original marker allegedly, and Mr. Grinnell's made a very good point. Um, it, I know it said that the original marker was about thirteen feet out in the water. And he was talking about, um, maybe we could get one of the dive team and if it was broken off, which I believe I did read it got broke. Maybe that thing is still in that water, and we can find that location. Other than that, I think it's really, um, on the association to get that survey. We've basically run our course on this.
I agree with you on that. I don't know where we take it after that.
I'm sure it will come up again. We can probably leave it on here for another week or two, but another meeting, yeah, I mean, the pictures. Some pictures, so this.
That shows something there, I don't know.
Well, I think that's the actual monument.
Yeah.
Like I said, you looked at the overview on the satellite views and
Yes.
And
Yeah.
One of them had the property line going straight through that cabin on top of the hill. The other one followed a straight line, so it's, like I said, it's out of our realm of figuring out at this point.
And, and as this, the author of this report we were provided even said to the draweries, it can be off three or four feet, any one of those points, and you project that out. That's not up to us to say.
Like you said, you shift it six inches one way, and then you go a lot of that many feet, it's gonna change the complete angle, so.
So. I assume someone has to respond to the association as to our findings.
I know you've kind of been running back and was dealing with them quite a bit. Would, did you mind doing that?
Uh, sure, I can do that.
Mr. Mogul, any?
No.
Opposition?
Okay.
Thank you, Diane. And next, we need to talk about the interviews for sergeants tentatively scheduled for July first. Chief Select is on there somewhere.
I have one application.
One application.
When are they due by? Well, you, you'll have a few more tomorrow.
Oh.
Oh.
But they're not due tomorrow. I might have a few more tomorrow.
Due tomorrow, they think at a certain time.
Oh. Doesn't seem like a day. I think it's too many.
It's a long day.
Why did we do that?
Alright.
Once we're here and there, it gives us time to review them, so.
Yep.
Alright. Next is the, um, vacant COA director position. Nadine?
Uh, the chief and I repeat, um, resumes, we chose six applicants to reach out to. Um, one of them did not return my call. Five of them set up a phone interview. Uh, one withdrew before the interview. We did speak with four applicants. Um, two were very good. When I called them back to see if they would be interested in continuing. Uh, one applicant has not returned my call, and the other one is very interested in moving forward.
So did I do the math right? We have one.
One.
Okay.
Yes. Um. And I think there may be one more. There was one applicant that I'll go back and look at her application, uh, but she would, she withdrew because she took another job, but she sent me an email over at the weekend. And said, wanted to know, but the position was still available, so I'll go look at her application again.
Okay.
Okay.
Once we know as well that, I guess we can figure out, bring them in and talk to them. Alright.
Well, when will we do that? Cause we are stacking up July first.
Well, I thought we were, I was gonna talk to Carol and Paula.
Yep.
Tomorrow.
Yep.
And then.
So you'll know something tomorrow?
I just, yeah. Well, if the other person is interested.
Yeah.
Yes, if we have to.
But then the interviews will be when?
When would you like to have them?
That's what I'm saying. If we keep shoving everything to July first, we're gonna stack that data pretty heavily. Unless we meet just to do two interviews.
That's the job. Okay.
And it's over the holiday.
Mr. Mogul, any? Rough on signing of that?
And then we meet again July fifteenth, so we push it even farther.
We could always meet on a different night to do that. Or that didn't go over so very well. We admitted it on a Saturday, but, I mean, it's, we could meet on the eighth. I don't see any reason why not. Um. It, it, every other is kind of a, a, a schedule of convenience if we have to have a meeting. You know, we meet every other, every week during most of the year except for during the summer, so we have to have another meeting on the eighth, so be it.
What's planned on? After, uh, Nadine finds out, what's going on? We'll plan on the eighth. Any preferred time or the normal time?
Normal time.
Alright, we'll do it at six o'clock on the eighth. We'll do the interviews for the COA position.
One more time.
One more.
They'd be ready for the twenty eighth, you know, to get them before the fiscal year. Would you be, no?
Won't matter. I mean, it the twenty eighth is a
Next Monday, I think.
No, that'll be, that'll be a Friday.
Friday.
Yeah, it'll be the twenty four.
And then next Monday.
Yeah.
I don't know if everybody else is available, but.
Kind of a, you know, a short window for them as well.
I think they, yeah, they could be better, in my opinion.
We'll just stick with the eighth.
Seven, eight.
Mr. Mogul, the H S I C I M A for W G and E and ISP.
No update at this time, other than, um, people may have noticed.
They have seen the vehicles out, yeah.
Let's go. Gas and electric folks have been in town looking at every single pole in the town to try to evaluate its condition and suitability for our project.
Marijuana dispensary deadline was June seventh. Miss Gale updates.
Um. In no particular order. The requests for information that did meet the submission criteria are as follows. Six eighty-one College Highway Inc., doing business as Cannabis Hut, submitted by Thomas Rook of Springfield with a proposed location at six eighty-six College Highway. Haven, who is a social equity applicant, submitted by Mark Dupuy of Westfield with a proposed location at six eighty-one College Highway. Sunrise Cannabis, a social equity applicant as well, submitted by Kaylee Hepburn of West Springfield. No proposed location at this time, but it is not required for the social equity applicants. And Piner Valley Trading, submitted by Michael Albert and Richard Fiore. Um, I believe both of Southwick. With a proposed location at six sixty College Highway. So those packages are available for our independent review. And, um, you know, we'll review them against the criteria, against the score sheets that we have, and then I presume we will want to schedule those for an interview as well on one of these non-meeting things. So, so we're gonna score independently and then submit them to Nicole, who's gonna summarize the score sheets and rank those. Um, but I presume we will finalize those scores after the interviews. And, and include the interviews as part of the information.
It's gone on this long. I'm not in any, I don't think it's needed, uh, need to be rushing, so I wouldn't, I just put it on, we said, with the fifteenth is the next regularly scheduled, and not the rig, next, after the July first, and I'm sorry.
Uh, the fifteenth is the next regularly scheduled.
I know when I grabbed my bag, there's an awful lot of information in there.
There is a lot.
Lot of information in there, but some of them are about that big.
They are a lot.
So, I, you know. I think the fifteenth.
Fifteenth.
Yeah.
Works for me. To schedule the interviews.
To do the interviews for the marijuana, the cannabis licenses. To make the final decisions. After we score everything.
Uh, prior to scoring will be after we meet with them and they supplement that information.
Alright, uh, Mass General Law Chapter sixty-one, sixty-one A, sixty-one B, write a first refusal policy review. The joint meeting is set for July eleventh, twenty twenty-four at six P M. Land use hearing room, T-Mobile Grant. I did literally just send the email to Mr. Sheil finally and, uh, asked him for the information that we need to move that forward. Um, and that's all I'm gonna be waiting on, and I can shoot that. Actually not. I have to get a couple of other people that wanna sign on to it, but after I have the information, I can finally put that grant finally together, fully together. Select master plan implementation subcommittee members, Mr. Mogul and Mr. Doughty.
Sorry, no update this week.
No update, okay. And the DPW plan to incorporate buildings and grounds department under DPW. That's still blocks everywhere.
Well, they were all gonna.
Did you have an opportunity, Randy?
I don't think anybody was like taking a ball with that, so I'm not sure.
You looking for, say, some direction?
I think someone needs to be directed.
Okay.
I think Nicole might be able to jump right in on that and coordinate.
Sure. Good call.
Well, we'll give you the particulars on who to get in touch with and, um, so you can, you can, Randy can fill in and, and, and do that. Sure. So, if, if, uh, that means everybody's approved?
Uh, absolutely. Trial by fire?
Nah.
Yeah.
Nah, that'd be easy.
And that is it as far as listed old business and dates to remember. Miss Gale, any old business?
No, sir.
Mr. Mogul?
Uh, just two things. One is the, uh, Ironman race was was that last weekend or the weekend before? It was a great event. Uh, thanks to the folks in town that came out and, uh, cheered on all those, uh, riders that came through town and to the motorists who showed a great deal of patience. Um, as that event made its way through town and to the, uh, safety agencies, uh, Southwood Police and Fire that were um, did a great job handling that traffic and all those riders. And, uh, I think we also have to, coming out of our meeting last week, um, I think this board needs to vote, uh, to designate you, Mr. Chairman, to uh, work with the ACAO for a letter of agreement with the incoming lieutenant. We voted the candidate, but I don't think we set up the process to to do the agreement with them.
Okay.
So. If you're looking for that motion.
I was gonna say, I guess I'm looking for that motion.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, I'll second the motion.
Roll, roll, Jason Perron, aye.
Daniel, aye.
Doug Mogul.
That's interesting.
Good for me.
Nadine, anything?
No, the agreement's drafted, so.
Okay. And it was just basically gonna kind of follow my own little one. And I have nothing new. I'm assuming Ms. Parker doesn't have any old business.
I don't have any business. I didn't know the water restriction, if you wanted to mention it to both meetings.
Um, people are well aware.
I certainly saw it everywhere. That doesn't stay a secret, man.
Yeah, I'll just, I don't wanna, I don't wanna touch that one. So. And that appears to be it for our agenda for the evening. Um, we're actually a little bit past seven. We're gonna be going into executive session. So we are going to be going to executive session, a motion to go into the executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one, subsections two and three, and Chapter two fourteen, Section one B, Labor Council. Litigation matters and strategy for collective bargaining with Police Union Coalition, FIRE I A F F, DPW, Non-Union Staff and Clerk, Union U P S E U, Executive Session Regarding Mass General Law, Chapter thirty A, Sections twenty-one, two and three, Chapter two fourteen, Section one B, and Exception Number Two. Moves to go into executive session to conduct collective bargaining sessions with non-union personnel and to not reconvene an open session. Moves to go into executive session to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel and to not reconvene an open session. And declare that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the body and to not reconvene an open session. and declare that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the body and to not reconvene an open session. Moves to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining and that the chair moved to go into executive session to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel and to not reconvene an open session, move to go into executive session to discuss tragedy, uh, tragedy. Strategy with respect to litigation and that the chair declare that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the body and to not reconvene an open session. And this regarding Chapter fifteen fourteen, Section one B, everyone will have a right to unregional substantial serious interference with their privacy in the sphere of jurisdiction and equity to enforce such right and in connection therewith to endure damages, motion?
Motion made.
Second.
Roll call vote. I.
I.